I'm just meeting everybody in 601. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And we are not starting with the pledge of allegiance. We're going to throw a little wrench in there. Yeah. Yes, we need to fill our vacancy officially. We do have Keg Lee on, so we'll just bet a standard so that we can officially fill that vacancy. And, uh, sit down.
So I will, at this time, uh, the vacancy that we have is chair. Um, so I will open the floor for any nominations for the position of chair of the brother school.
I'll make the motion to nominate Mrs. Tui as chair.
Any seconds?
Seconds.
All right. Okay. All right. Any other nominations?
Yes.
Okay, here are none, we'll close them, all in favor? Wonderful. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
All right. Great. Okay, so now we need to, um, assign the vice chair, since that was my previous position. Um, open the floor for nominations for vice chair.
We nominated Sam Kowalski.
I'll second that, Matt. All in favor? Congratulations, Sam.
Thank you.
Also, um, we have, since Kate was also the alternate Union 61 representative for the Sturridge Committee, um, I would like to entertain a motion to nominate Jen to be the alternate for Union 61. I will second that. All in favor? Congratulations, Jen. All right. Now, we may move on with the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the approval of the minutes. Any discussion on the minutes from the last meeting, November 4? Discussion edits. Here are none. All in favor of approving the minutes from November 4? And next up on agenda is the financial report.
Okay, we have the latest report in your packet. Uh, there have not been any significant issues, fortunately. So nothing kind of sending our budget off the rails. I think we're still, uh, in good shape as planned. We've started working on the fiscal '23 budget. We will, by the end of the year, have some holiday packets that will either send via backpack or mail to you. Sometimes they have them done by this meeting, but we are-
Until Christmas.
Yeah, exactly. With the lovely-
So exciting.
Mary Bellez, to this day-
The only parent that thought it was really something.
She's the one that thought for sure, I'm telling you. We suggest, enjoy your holiday cheer and don't worry about opening it, but nobody's gonna slap your wrist if you do.
You check them there.
So the other things I wanted to mention, uh, and the last page is just, you know, the reminder of where we are with your, your grants, your federal grants. What's not even showing up here is SR3, which we have planned on spending. We've got two more years. Um, so the plan, as we're building budgets, we'll certainly be looking at the things that we're using your SR2 grants for this year and seeing if those indeed are the things that we're gonna recommend, um, because SR3 has about, is about twice the size of SR2. So the things that we're doing this year, we can be talking about during the budget process, January and February, and have those grant funds for two years. So it's about twice the size and they don't sunset until September 24th. So we're gonna have two fiscal years to spend that SR3 pool, which is great. It's kind of what our plan was. We could sustain for three years, but we'll have those conversations and remind you what we've been paying for this year from SR2, especially from a staffing level, and, and do we want to plan SR funds for next year in the year, or at least next year? Or are there some things that we, for sure, we want and could get into the budget? So we'll have those conversations in January. Um, while I have you though, I did wanna give you an update. Sorry, I wasn't here. Actually, I didn't even have all of this update for last month anyway, even if I was here. But an update on the, um, the trailer, the, the bus staff trailer. We've had a little bit of activity. So on one end, you folks, um, supported paying for four lease payments. The plan was September through December, or October throughout January, I forget where. Um, a little bit of movement that's happened since then is the town had more grant funds that has to be spent by December or January. So Barbara Barry contacted me and got the approval to cover the next four, the October through January payments. So those funds that you voted, I can put to after that, February to May or June, which is awesome. Can take care of that situation and allow us to get a little more information from the current lease company, which we were having a lot of difficulty, was not responding, not responding, not responding. We did, uh, Steve Nemberkow actually just finally got ahold of a human being yesterday. Turns out whoever the account rep was, and I wasn't involved in the initial procurement and installing, uh, the DPW, DPW director, I think Butch Jackson took the lead in that. So whoever this company is, wasn't very responsive. Turns out whoever the rep is that we've been trying to communicate with, there's no one with them, and nobody was apparently checking there. So he found a person who at least gets what we're trying to do and is gonna go to his, um, manager and propose some kind of buyout. In the meantime, Butch had already gone to two other companies to get some quotes for another unit. So Butch Jackson and your facilities manager, Robin, have been working this because they really think it's the right thing. It's become very clear that what we've been doing for a long time and kind of shoving this entire mini-bus business into the DPW really wasn't good for the bus folks or the DPW folks. Our, our bus folks have been using the public safety complex for their couple of times, at least a month, trainings. Um, and so having this trailer will help all departments of the town, and it sounds to me like other departments are anxious to support it. Um, the quotes they got, that Butch Jackson got from two other companies, and I think they were new units, was $165,000 for an out-and-out purchase. What I don't know is how much more the town spent to actually install it, hook up the plumbing, hook up the electricity, do the kind of groundskeeping, so certainly the easiest, cheapest thing would be to get this current company to say, "Give us a number, let us, you know, buy it out," and it should be something less than $165. Worst case, they don't wanna play ball at all. We'd be looking at $165 and a potential more rounds work. So I am not asking for anything tonight in terms of support. I'm sort of feathering the bed for you all and letting you know that, um, the DPW director is in support of trying to, um, make this happen and, uh, your facilities manager is. So as part of the conversations in January and February for the budget, I, I will likely be recommending that we submit some kind of article at town meeting to whatever, whether it be buy this one out, purchase another one, and go from there. Um, and that would be sort of a joint one, which Jackson has made it very clear, Ian, the facility manager would support, um, that article kind of going from all departments. And then, and then see what happens.
I just asked, what were you paying per month again?
Uh, $2,500.
And how long have we spent so far?
Well, the town-
Okay, we haven't, we're taking more-
The town paid for the first, I've lost track of time, so a year, we're probably gonna be looking at a year and a half that the town's federal grant funds paid for. Um, and, and we had committed to paying about four payments to get us close to the end of the year. And then we at least asked, and you know, I'm hoping the town would support putting, um, that unit there. Interestingly, a few years ago, there was beginning conversations, the DPW director had reached out and said that there were some conversations, future planning, capital planning, about working on designing or, or preparing for a new DPW facility. And he had reached out and said, "When we do that, we wanna make sure we talk to schools and see what their needs are and what the bus folks' needs are, um, because it absolutely is a benefit to the town to have your fleet internal." We've done, every three or four years, I do an analysis that compares what it costs us. Never mind having the ability to have your own staff, you know the drivers, you have a little more control. Um, and I compare that to the outsourcing, I have the ability to do that, because I have to outsource to McCarthy for the other four towns. So I know for sure what it costs to outsource versus internal, and, um, it's, it's certainly been a financial benefit. So all those things taken into account, uh, there were a few years ago conversations of, you know, what should the DPW complex make sure it covers? So, um, your facility manager, Robin, had mentioned when I, you know, said, you know, "If you guys could help at all kind of get to somebody on this current unit." She certainly mentioned, you know, "I definitely would support, um, getting that or another trailer, and I'm not worried down the road if there was another complex." The town certainly could make use of that unit in a number of other places. So that's sort of the update. We'll keep you posted, you know, with any luck, in January, I'll have something from this current vendor, Will Scott, um, to at least update you on, and then I don't know yet what the deadline is for the town as to when they're gonna be asking for articles for the annual town meeting, but sometime before that, I'll come to you with recommendations.
So we haven't spent that money that was earmarked?
We have not yet. It's encumbered here. It's encumbered in, and it was, it was the SR grants, so it's encumbered there, but we haven't spent it yet.
So we won't have to until-
January, February, I forget what the dates are. I think the first payment might be Fe- probably February. I think the town is covering, um, through the end of December, the first January payment. Think that's it for this month?
Do you have any questions? Okay, communications.
So we just, uh, we forwarded to you electronically the Southern Wester County Collaborative, both the first quarter report and annual report, just as a reminder that if you ever want paper versions, I'm happy to bring them. It was a request of the committees years ago to just send them electronically. We're required to do those by statute, um, and if you have any questions, happy to answer them. But again, if people prefer paper, I'm happy to pop them to the mailroom. No.
Not me too.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Moving on to the fiscal's report. As you can see, enrollment remains stable. Out to 53, we did have quite a few movements, but we also have children who moved out. Under recognition, so I'd like to thank the Junior, Tara Peary, Lydia Lucas, the Tri-Community Church Collaboration, and community members for helping to provide 35 Burgess families with Thanksgiving dinners. Congratulations to Michelle Ballas on her retirement effective November 30th, 30th, after nearly 16 years of service as a Burgess paraprofessional. And congratulations to Brian Marrow on his upcoming retirement effective December 31st, after over 20 years of service as a Burgess custodian. Curriculum instruction assessment, we have parent-to-conferences as you're aware, and report cards will be issued this coming Friday. As you can see, there's a number of great things going on in all of our classrooms and departments. Uh, I would point your attention to the new POS system, is up and running, discussed this last month, in which instead of having the kids having to enter their code, um, there's actually a QR system and they have the, um, cards with the, like, the code on it. So it's definitely moving things along and, you know, just creating a lot less stress for especially our younger students who have to remember the five-digit number and get to, you know, wherever they're at. So it's working on one of Lidl Learns, the, um, food service staff, to any students who may have allergies or specific dietary needs, so it's a really helpful system to have. Do the kids have it? They do, they do. They have laminated cards that we've done. They keep the parents home. They keep them home. And, um, school improvement council, we'll be meeting Monday, December 13th. And the focus of our meeting will, to be reviewed, to go over the new district improvement plan that was approved last month. Um, just a couple of things that didn't make the update, as we've discussed in the past, parent-teacher volunteers. We do have our parent-teacher helper group up and running. Christina Wood Fortune graciously agreed to sort of organize that, as you would know, many of you have participated in it. It's definitely something that needs organization and deployment. So that is up and running, recreation of basketball, is taking place in the Lower Gym as we speak. Um, the after-school tutorial, tutorial program that we've talked about should be starting after January 1st. We took a quite a few staff interested in helping us with that. That will be in person Tuesday and Thursday from 3:15 to 4:15. And, um, on a really happy note, um, grades one through six will be presenting a virtual holiday concert. So the students will be organized into their bear packs, which we haven't done in a really long time, so it's going to be wonderful. So you'll have a presentation on the Burgess YouTube channel of firsts through sixth graders singing different songs, the classics, things like that. So just really happy to be able to offer that. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for this panel? Just excited about that. Are they on to the superintendent's side?
Okay, great, thank you. And I wanna thank everybody as well for all their continued hard work, um, throughout the year. I'm sorry to believe we're in December already, um, just a few, few weeks to go till the first of the year.
Is this your last official superintendent appointment?
It is.
For Burgess, yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
So, no.
Well, let's make it a good one.
Well, I don't know, I, I don't set the expectations too high, so.
Flashy introduction.
We are going as a district through the Department of Education tiered-focused monitoring process. For those of you who have been around with us for many years, it used to be called, um, the Program Quality Assurance, um, and then the Coordinated Program Review, but it's now the Tiered Focus Monitoring. So the Department of Ed, we do a lot of desktop kind of document review that we send to them. This is a requirement, and so they will be visiting in January, reviewing our documents for special ed, um, and civil rights. They will look at things like Title I, as well as, um, special ed programming. I'm thinking I'm missing a third.
ELO.
The ELO, excuse me, of course.
English Language Learning.
Yep, English Language Learning Population. So we will continue to update you. We will get some sort of formal report or document from the Department of Ed following their review. Exactly when we'll get that, but not 100% sure. Also, for the holiday break, the Christmas holiday week, um, the way the holidays fall, I would just encourage anybody who did need to communicate with the school for that week, it's a quick week, but to make sure that you communicate with the office, because due to the way the holidays fall, some weekends, there, there will likely be days that there's just a custodian or two in the building, and I don't anticipate there's a ton of foot traffic anyways, but on a way, folks know. Also wanted to thank the committee for their support of our district improvement plan. Again, this was sort of interrupted by COVID. We're, we're delighted to, to put it out there as a roadmap, really, for the next five years on the work that we will be doing, as well as, um, we will post the newly approved school calendar after January 1st. Try not to complicate the calendars too much, so when we post on the website, we'll wait till after the first of the year. But we know every year that we actually get questions in January and February for the start of school around vacations and things. So folks really appreciate it being up early, we'll do that. As well as the central office budget, which again, you'll see, um, some references to that when we go through the Burgess budget in January. So, um, and that's it. We've been working hard to, to end the calendar year for our, and I appreciate all your support. You're welcome.
Any questions? Any last questions for Dr. Knowsak or Superintendent? Saving purpose's void.
Exhaust yourself now!
Well, thank you very much. Jen, thank you.
You're welcome. My pleasure.
We are up to our first public access. Public access. Thank you tonight. All quiet? Okay. Here are none. We shall move on, um, to subcommittee reports, and that would be Mary, and she is up here tonight. Do we have anything?
I tried to write some notes to remember. Um, now, but that was the night of the joint meeting, so many of you were there and they just continued, um, which was really awesome and something I personally hope to continue. Having the superintendent scholars there, where typically it comes to, they've always come to a December school committee meeting. I loved having them there when the joint were there, and I, so I'm hoping to continue that. That worked out nicely. You saw those, as Dr. Knowsak say, those students that just embarrassed us as you're reading there.
Leo.
Right, you just like, oh, you just feel so-
You're pressed after the first sentence you read about that. I mean, it's, yeah, it's unbelievable. And shout out to Sturridge's, um, Dan DeStefano was one of the children who we recognized as outstanding.
So that was also, I mean, from then, I, the notes, I cannot remember because of the timing. I know the Tantascwa Committee spent a little time reporting on some of the sessions. There were four of their school committee members went to the conference that Erin and I were at and not here. And so they talked a little bit about some of the sessions down there. I think the students have reported on just coming off of the successful homecoming dance and junior high, um, dance and Halloween dance. I just, I think, I didn't remember if Mary had done that by the month before. And we're preparing for Thanksgiving, which the Thanksgiving football game was Wednesday night. And, and I, I think it went well, but we'll have to see what the feedback is.
It was freezing, but it was so exciting.
Yep, yep, and it was a nice full stadium of, of kids and adults. So I can't remember anything else. I think most of the business that night was really done on the front end of the joint meeting. And the only other note slash reminder is, on a subcommittee level, we'll have to look and see. I'm not sure if you voted a negotiation subcommittee for this year. We're gonna need one. Your support staff will be negotiating. We haven't, you know, you've started that, heard from them, I don't think yet, but that will be coming in spring. And we'll have to look, 'cause even if you did vote someone during negotiations, there's a chance that whoever you voted, you know, may have changed a bit. So I will look and see if come April. In either case, come January or so, we'll probably kind of be prepared. Typically, we have two school committee members, um, negotiating, and we will have to do one.
I think it's kind of a typically ad hoc rate look for. I don't think, we'll check them in a few, I don't think, the company voted or something.
So just keep in mind, we'll be, we'll be looking for two of these volunteer for that.
Thank you for your contributions there. Um, if you see for Tantascwa, we have that within the area, so we covered off on the Tantascwa business.
Yep.
So we will move on to unfinished business, a carryover from our last meeting, um, we had Mary, because I'm on the vaccination rate, um, stop for the district that I see that you have.
I did. I sent this, um, and I went from the minutes and the to-do, so, um, again, not being here. I thought I would have this, at least have questions as it relates to the document. I did send this electronically when we received it, but this is the department's guidance. Nothing has changed, um, as of now, and I'm happy to send it electronically. If you wanna hit the links, the one link I did print for you is that a school attestation form that I would have to submit or whatever, saying that we had indeed reached our 80%. What the, the state has typically done is they say there, according to their document, it's a quick turnaround to review the attestation, to look at the data. They do not prescribe a system for a school to determine 80%. They're not really sort of interested in getting it at that level. They feel that the school is the best to determine it. It would truly be, once you submit the, um, form where you're attesting that you've confirmed that 80%, you submit that to the department, they review it, and then we sort of get back to it as soon as quickly as they can. Those numbers have ticked up for schools, high schools, um, I believe primarily who have submitted. Um, at our last commissioner call had the number, was it 20 or 20, and the anticipation even fewer.
Yeah, that was a week or two ago, so I thought there was a couple more.
Schools in the state?
Yeah. So school districts, I think it was school districts.
School districts.
Which, for the most part, they were likely high schools, maybe a middle school.
Yeah, based just on the time. So even something like a Baycat, I'll use it as an example, is a high school. It's a regional vocational high school, but it's also its own district. So it depends really on the configuration. I do check the percent every Thursday. They're posted at 5pm, so this is what I have tonight. I did not. I usually cotton paste and I keep my color codes, 'cause I like colorized coded documents, but, um, so the November 23rd data had for five to 11-year-olds, and that's really the targeted group. We had, um, you had 20% of the children in the town with one dose, and there were no, no percent clearly, because they just opened up for children five to 11 that were fully vaccinated. A week later, as of tonight, there are 24% that have received one dose and 1% that is fully vaccinated. So of the numbers, the full FTEs of children five to 11 years old in the town are 952, according to the state. So making incremental gains. Your 12 to 15-year-olds, just for informational purposes, are at 65% with one dose, 59% fully vaccinated, and, um, as of tonight, 81% of the 16 to 19-year-old population and 77% fully vaccinated. So moving up incrementally again. So when we get to the point where it's 80%, a reminder, the document reviews it as well. It's a combination of students and then staff, whether it's staff that's direct service staff with children or staff cafeteria custodians, and those are also part of, of the percent. So we haven't really started to, we're unable to ask staff at this point. It's free, it's medical information, they're free to tell us. And we've held off at, um, until we started to move up to say if folks are interested in having the nurse know as an adult who is vaccinated, that finds lots of times, frankly, through the contact tracing, a lot of that comes out as a conversational point, because even around quarantine, if you're fully vaccinated, there are different procedures that if you're not vaccinated. So our nurses have a pretty good sense, I think, with the adults, but we haven't really formalized that process, so we'll be working on that. And then for students, if it's entered through the state M-I-I-S system, the nurses will be able to review that as well. But 24, so what I said, 24% is, you know, that's a pretty good percent, I think, in a couple of weeks, so.
And that is five to 11-year-olds?
Yep, yep, yeah. And that was as of tonight. You can get that on the, it's the Mass Department of Ed. Yeah, just, I go by the municipality, it's, what do you call it, bookmarked. You just go right there every Friday, Thursday, so, um, to see what they have. So that is the process. I don't know if you have any questions that I might be able to answer, um, specific to us as far as process goes.
So that 24% of five to 11-year-olds and then whoever in the, in the building?
Yep.
Would, they would all have to equal 80% in order for a mask to come off?
Yes.
And that would be-
As of now. Right, as of now. And the commissioner in November extended the mask mandate through January 15th. Um, and at that point, I suspect he's been, the state's been about a couple of weeks, I would say, or, or a week from this last one before that was gonna sunset, and then they had that really long block. We had gone kind of a month at a time, and then in November, it extended it through January. So I suspect they'll just continue to monitor the data and then, you know, make a decision from there. So exactly what time they will, or, or the timeline on when they'll adjust that, you know, is anybody's sort of guess.
It, it looked like either in minutes or in the summer, and I were kind of trying to catch up, but there was a question about the meeting. An, an emergency meeting. If we hit the threshold, it, it isn't so much an emergency meeting. You can call an off-cycle meeting anytime you want, as we have done before. So anytime the chair says, "We, we wanna have a meeting, we're not scheduled to meet for three weeks, we'd like to have one next week," we just post to do so, see what the agenda is. Um, depending on the timing, maybe it's kind of, we're close to having a regular meeting and we put something on the agenda to, you know, we're always gonna kind of update you on what your data is, uh, data is, or if we've gotten a change from, um, Desi, and, you know, obviously after January 15th, if we're gonna get something, it'd be awesome if we know it before, or when we like that. If there's something-
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, I, I, I know a lot of them, but I will be stunned if-
We do.
We meet on the 6th. I will be stunned if we haven't heard something from the Department of Ed. I will be stunned if we haven't heard something from the department at by then on, on what they, who they plan on doing meeting 15th or 16th. So we have more conversations then.
Okay, well, and then we'll, we'll see. So you wouldn't need, you wouldn't do a public hearing, that's a real specific process for real specific needs, and there are posting requirements around that. But it would certainly, you could have, as Deb said, in one agenda item meeting that the chair called with enough, um, or comply with open meeting law with 48 hours notice. You can just say, we need to have this, we're looking at, looked like in the minutes, um, seeking feedback or information, and that would be the goal. So as we get closer, certainly we can go further and go from there.
We have some questions from the public. Will we pursue the open discussion? Maybe we can, I don't really know, I'll, I'll hear the questions. Do I have a question? How does a school determine which children are vaccinated and which children are not? Is this information coming?
Say your name first.
Diane Cooper, I have three grandchildren, and I'm in the district.
Hi, Diane. The nurse through the mass immunization system has access to checked immunizations. So if you go to your pediatrician and they enter that data, it's in there. So that's how they would confirm it for the students.
I will say, as a school nurse and a nurse, um, parents can opt out of that. And there are some pediatricians who are very old school and don't enter it into any type of database, so.
So you're at 24%. No, yeah, yes, this is mass C P, not for school, just to be clear. It's an age group of five to 11, so these could be children who go to a private school, a parochial school, homeschool, but clearly the majority of children within that age group are going to attend furlough, likely, just based on our numbers. So according to the public health data, um, 24% within that age group in the town of Sturbridge as of Tuesday, uh, have received their first dose of the vaccine.
It sounds though, based on that, that you're at 24%. That's been, I would think, become less and less, because I think people are becoming more aware of the unsafety of the vaccines for children and the fact that they have such a success rate of, or they have a very low chance of getting into the first place, and they have a very low chance of getting very sick. If you never reach that 80%, that means kids wear masks like forever.
We, we would have to follow the department of ed guidance and whatever they say.
And there's nothing you guys can do to step away from that and just make your own choices here. There's no way, no how.
Not through the regulation of structured learning times. School has to meet a certain amount of days and hours to be considered public school, not just to receive.
You know, I've, I've done a lot of reading about masks, and I've read that it's really not safe for these children to be in masks outside of the day. It's not healthy for them. It will have some ill effect on their lives when they're over a lifetime. It seems to me that you guys could try to figure out for somebody, try to figure out how to step outside of this, and get some creative thinking, hopefully, see what you can do there. Terrible.
I definitely hear you, Mrs. Shea. Thank you for your, um, your feedback, but unfortunately, as Dr. Knowsick said, that in order to be, for our learning hours to count, um.
Will it be any help to give a recommendation?
Yes.
Hi, Kathy Caitlin, I have two kids at the school. I'm just wondering, for kids who are vaccinated, is that changing, um, the contact tracing protocols? Are they?
If you're fully vaccinated, you are not considered a close contact.
Okay.
If you're still a school.
Okay.
You just want to.
You're still a, considered a close contact, you just fall into a thing now that tears them. Exactly.
You don't have to quarantine.
So you're clearly impacted at just at a different level.
And would that be part of the just to stay program?
No.
So they're separated out that, so.
Yes. After their second dose.
So the parent would be able to share that card with Nurse Munier if they wanted to make sure that was fully understood?
Mm-hmm.
Excellent. That's very good.
Sure. And I don't know, but you might know, Jenna, the percent of pediatricians that either don't report it or have chosen, is that, I would guess that's not more than norm, but I truly don't.
I think it's less than norm. Um, I think it's, there's quite a few people who opt out.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I don't really know.
Yeah, I don't either. I haven't even heard any of that.
I opt out. Pediatrician doctor now? No, the parents opt out. Um.
What about HIPAA? I mean, why does a doctor have to give the school this information?
HIPAA doesn't apply to schools.
HIPAA doesn't apply to schools?
No. No, it's protected under their education, 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 I think.
That information is not shared outside of the health office, though.
Yeah, the nurse alone.
That's the registered nurse who has that information.
Oh, so the registered nurse, nurse only has that?
Correct.
Oh, yeah, we don't.
That information is not shared with anybody in the school.
And to the example earlier, the nurses, the nurses getting, for example, if there was a close, deemed close contact, the nurses, you, parents are saying, my child has been vaccinated, here's the card, so the nurses kind of keeping their.
So the children that have not, the children that are vaccinated have had cards? I mean, with the nurses?
No.
But the nurse can, can look at the system and confirm, again, if, if the child's fully vaccinated, they're not going to need to quarantine their, they don't need test and stay because they're not falling in that, in that, in that bucket of close contact that needs to be monitored.
Discussion on unfinished business.
I do have, uh, visitors policy. Where are we with visitors?
So we have prepared volunteers are coming in. We've always allowed visitors in for IP meetings and for different things, but PTH is up and running here, teaching helper organization. Christina looked for, for tests graciously agreed to take over the direction of that, and we are actively.
And plexiglass barriers?
So we are looking at that. We did do some investigating, um, so it offers some, um, it's an engineering control. It offers some protection from particulates. Because we have students facing one another, we use it as an extra layer. OSHA would refer to the use of it or compare the use of it to, similar to a shield when you go to a snack, a salad bar. So it offers you an extra layer of protection.
Does it prevent someone from being considered a close contact if they cross from each other?
It depends on the situation. So in here in the cafeteria, it's a little bit harder because the children are sitting, um, aside of each other. So that where they are being considered as close contacts in here, but not in the cafeteria, not in the cafeteria, because it's just directly across from each other.
So the person across from them is not considered, would not be considered a close contact because of the plexiglass?
Where? Correct. Because they're almost six feet apart. Oh, they're six feet apart.
Well, if there's, I just don't understand, if they're six feet apart, why do we have the plastic?
I'll have to ask.
Okay.
Get that to you.
Okay.
I think the, the spirit of this question last meeting also was just in, you know, in light of Ramon, the optics, it's, it's just a terrible environment for kids to sit in a prison-looking thing with the plastic. And then also from a cleaning standpoint, it's an extra thing, and I know we're a bit strained on our custodial staff right now, so if we could, we could be a win-win.
Take away one more thing.
We, we'll look at that. We will look, and as I started off by saying, we are investigating now.
Just observing littles in the cafeteria, when they are sitting on that bench, right, there will be a barrier around the person on this side, and there will be two people on the other side of you that are facing. And they love to scoot their feet around all across, it's like, stay in your spot, stay in your spot, stay in your spot. But the person who's behind that barrier, if they scoot over here and they scoot over there, they are like face to face with, so.
It's an extra layer, as I said about, it's an extra layer of protection, so forget about close contacts, right? Forget about that. If we can, you know, try to prevent a child from getting sick, that's, you know, that's the spirit of the.
What is the, you might not know, the, um, how many close contacts, like test and stay kids have come back positive from a contact to school?
A few. I don't know the exact number, but late October or maybe kind of, we did have a, um, fortunately not, I'm trying to remember, but.
Okay. All testing, all completely negative, though?
Most of them are really negative. I love seeing those, they're all negative in emails.
The numbers in general are very, I mean, I locate it every week, I mean, the most furloughers ever had is 10 in one week. So.
It's wonderful. It's wonderful. But it's combined numbers. It really is.
Do you want unfinished business?
I do. I have, I'd like to revisit, on August 30th, we had a meeting, um, we voted to rescind our previous mask policy and adopt the DESI policy. So we're following that, um, and I know, I received an email, and I think we were all copied on this, um, about the disciplinary action for non-mask compliant. How are we handling?
We don't have a disciplinary policy. Because we don't look at it as discipline. We look at this as a health issue. So the protocol that we use is two to three warnings from a teacher, which should be being followed up by a message to the parent, which the teacher's going to test this as the policy, the procedure.
So.
So if, so if your child's teacher talks to your child, your child is asked to, you know, wear their mask appropriately, and then, um, a communication, a written communication should be going to, I had to speak to so-and-so today about the mask. Two to three of those encounters then go to a referral to the health office, to have Lisa Newyer talk to the child, call, contact the parent, because again, we're looking at this as health, a health issue, not a discipline issue. After that point, if it continues to be an issue, then administration is asked to interview. I can tell you that between me, Mr. Aaron, and Ms. Jager, in the past year and one third, we've talked to combined five children and their parents.
Mary's had her.
So it's, it's, it's an issue that's a non-issue, and I know, um, guessing I understand where the communication came from. And I did ask the parent to call me because there was some information upon the investigation that I needed to talk about before I put forth, because just to send out that information would have been just generated more conversation. I much would have preferred to have had a conversation and then follow up with an email.
This sparked curiosity just with me personally, because after that, after we took a vote to do that, we never really followed up with how we were going to handle in, you know, in the DESI recommendation, it's, you know, up to local, so we never really followed up with it.
We did talk about it at the meeting, and I explained exactly what I'm telling you tonight.
Oh, okay. I don't recall that, I'm sorry. Yeah, okay.
And that was one of the reasons we were very comfortable rescinding the original one, because it did deal with discipline, and one of the disciplines was up to going home for remote learning, which isn't an option, it doesn't count.
Right.
This year. So that was definitely a key thing, but we definitely don't see it as discipline.
Okay.
Because the policy actually caused for the child to have to go home and then.
It went in there.
Which policy?
The one, the one we just.
Oh, the last, right, or rescinded policy.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
But, you know, we don't look at it as discipline. They're children, right? They're children to the pandemic.
They're children disciplined?
What?
But isn't like taking away recess?
We're not taking away, that's, so that's why I needed to have a conversation, because after the investigation and talking with the child, the information that was shared was contradictory to what I was going to.
Got it. Okay. So to, just for my knowledge, it's two to three warnings to the child, which is also communicated to the parent.
Yeah, you had to, the teacher had to speak to your child, yeah.
Um, and then a referral to the health office if it is to continue.
Yeah, because then Lisa can have a different type of impact, because this is a health issue, right?
Okay.
At that point, it comes to administration.
Okay. Got it. Thank you. I was just unsure of the procedure.
I have another question. So before COVID, we had no masks, a plastic barrier, just nothing. We had the flu every year, we had the cold. Now we have COVID, they scare us to death, and now we have masks for life, for something once again, that's not going to take out any child. You know, maybe soon for a few days, maybe if they even get it, and we're going along with all this stuff, like this makes sense. I don't understand.
Can you give a thought?
Okay. I need you guys, I have another question. If a child can't wear a mask, I have a friend who had to keep the kid home from school last week, because every time he wore his mask, his nose was stuck. So when he takes the mask off, his nose is not wrong. What do they do? They keep their kid out of school? He can't wear a mask, we have.
Not here.
What's that?
Not here, they don't. We have children who are on exception because of.
And that was going to be my question. Can she get some sort of.
Is a doctor's.
Doctor to help them with that? Because she told me, she said, I kept him home, his nose was running, he hasn't had a mask on, so I couldn't serve him to school. That's what she.
That's not here, though.
I'll tell her to talk to you about.
Wasn't that a little bit critical, critical, ma'am? I mean, if you have a child that has a problem wearing a mask.
Correct.
It has to be a certain standard, and we'll tell you that many doctors will not provide a mask.
No, you have to jump the room.
The doctors will not provide that.
I'll see if I can find a source to that, to get those, that would actually. Is there actors around this country who will participate about that?
We're the driving, not the mask.
Appreciate the inputs, but we need to have the format of the meeting, so, um, I'll be finished with unfinished business.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We have new business. We have.
Just a few policies, just a few, um, and they're kind of more housekeeping. I pitch in here because Mary's not here, and I actually, this is the first batch that I have stepped around, stepped away from being the administrator overseeing. So, but, but they're pretty straightforward. The first one is, as you can see, just some small housekeeping, cleaning up language, um, instead of spelling out the actual chapter and, and acts, to just say law and regulation, um, because laws sometimes change and sometimes have additional numbers added. So that is really just a request to amend on first reading, just those little housekeeping. The next three are old policies that MASC has stricken off of their books a number of years ago. You can see some of them, most of them, they're antiquated, they're, um, either moot, for example, we don't necessarily have a remedial instruction program or teacher. We certainly provide remedial services. Some of this language goes way back when, too. You only had a Title I teacher that taught Title I kids and only Title I funds paid for it. Title I funds started decreasing, and we will, like, we still want to have these programs, and we keep them. So they're old language, they don't exist anymore in MASC's books, and in some cases they're incomplete. Um, I H A with basic instructional programs starts listing out curriculums and subjects, and there's a number of subjects that we actually have curriculum for that aren't even listed there. So we're looking to just rescind those three. We still have to live by all the laws and regulations around instruction and continue to, so those three are not, and are not accurate. So however you prefer to separate votes, one to amend and the other to rescind the three, or is there even a possibility of pushing it all into one motion, it's up to you folks.
Well, let's keep it separate in case there's a discussion. So I'll, I'll make a motion, um, to, uh, what do we do?
Amend?
Amend upon first reading, uh.
I H C.
Number I H B.
Yep.
A second. Any discussion on the amendments to I H B? None? All in favor? And the next thing is, I will make a motion to rescind upon first reading IGPP, IGPH, and IHA. All in favor? Sorry, I forgot the session. I had discussions, I was so focused on.
Okay.
Three lines. I just wanted to ask on the IHA, do we have something that outlines, or is it just that this is antiquated because you can't possibly have in a policy the basic instructional program details? Because I like the things in here, but you were saying that we have something more that.
Yeah, exactly, it's, 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 it's been edited, it's been added to, it still exists, we still have to live by MGL, your legal references there refer to the laws. It's just, this was pretty much spelling out the laws then. So the state law requires that schools, this was back in '07, that this whole thing is quoting the law. The law has been tweaked and changed.
Yeah, like FSED will be made available to students, you must offer, you have to have every child that's tested.
Right.
Even things like the law states American history, that's when the only really required back in the day, pre-standard social studies was an American history and something else. I know this because I taught.
There's no.
I taught something else in high school when I taught, was put to school, so they're now in standard.
Yeah, there's no reference to technology standards here, which are, are part of.
Okay, I kind of like some of the curriculum guidelines, though.
They still exist, and we could certainly get you the documents, the most updated documents if you'd like, because there's certainly robust documents out there.
Is that something, is it online, or is it?
We can find the, there's, there'll be DESI links, so we'll go there.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
Not a problem.
Rewinding on the mayor, okay, is there any more discussion on the rescinding of these three policies before we take another vote to say all in favor upon first reading, rescinding these three policies? opposed?
So we will go through this again before we.
Yes, this is first reading.
This is first reading. Yep. I just want, just for reference, I just want to see those other things before I.
Sure.
Go all in.
You'll have a chance next, next month. Okay. Okay, well, we are up to adjournments, and before we do, I just want to say again, thank you, Dr. Knowsitt, for your many years of service, and we will miss you, and we know where to find you. You might just come and hang out for public access.
I just might, you know, on some nice sunny.
You're always welcome.
Yes, thank you, it has been my pleasure to serve just tremendous communities and work with outstanding staff and great colleagues, beautiful families and children, so I am a really blessed woman, I'm very appreciative. I look forward to a little bit of a slower pace, and I know that Mrs. Boyd will do a tremendous job as well as the two of everybody, all the faculty who stand up. We're really lucky to live and work in such a wonderful place, so.
We're very lucky to have you, so thank you.
Thank you.
And we wish you a very happy, restful retirement.
Thank you.
And with that, I will make the motion to adjourn.
You got these ready to go? Thank you, my friend.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great holiday, my folks.